And hopefully Maurice will be in any second.
I see we have Jeff, I see we have Mary Kate, I see we have I don't see any other trustees, I guess we have Norman.
Samalid.
Samalid Shaw, okay, she is okay. Okay, didn't see her smiling face, I see it as a name. There we go. Nice, I'm all eat.
Hello.
Hello.
And we got, you have Maurice on yet?
He's trying, he's trying.
I'll give a couple, a couple more seconds and then we can get started. I see him sneaking on there.
Yeah.
There he is. Me, the Maurice, I guess with that we can, we can get started, Nene, would you please take the role?
Yes, Mary Kate, you're in.
Present.
Max Starks.
Present.
Samalid Hogan.
Present.
Maurice Lindsay.
Present.
Norm Jordaan is not in, and Jeff Sattler.
Present.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nene, and good afternoon, everyone, so we will start with our investment subcommittee report. I am of the previous chair of the, of the committee, I was not at the last meeting, so if we could have someone else give us the update, it'd be great.
Absolutely, I'm happy to.
Thank you, Mary Kate.
Absolutely, I attended that meeting and Mike Chase, a partner from Refusion Advisors, reviewed the IPS, which is the Investment Policy Statement Asset Allocation Summary. Our allocations fall within the allowable range and no adjustments to the IPS are recommended. Assets under management as of December 31st total 29.7 million. The long-term account consists of 19.8 million and recognized a 4.2 return for the quarter, which is in line with the benchmark. It also recognized a 12.7 return for the year as compared to 11.7 from the benchmark. The short-term account consists of 9.9 million and recognized a minus point two return for the quarter, which is also in line with the benchmark. Refusion has continued to implement the dollar cost of that advantage approach, transferring 1 million from the short-term portfolio to the long-term portfolio. The subcommittee was in agreement to continue this approach until May, when the short-term portfolio reaches approximately 5 million. We had a little bit of a robust conversation, Q and A, and once again, want to just thank Mike for all the hard work, and that was our meeting, Chair.
Great, okay, thank you very much for going through, through that very thoroughly with, with here at this meeting. Any comments, questions, Mary Kate, on the investment performance? Okay, great, with that, Nene, if you take the role.
Yes, Mary Kate Miren.
Yes.
Max Starks.
Yes.
Samalid Hogan.
Yes.
Maurice Lindsay.
Yes.
Norm Jordaan, and Jeff Sattler.
Yes.
Thank you.
Great, thank you, Nene, thank you, everyone. Now let's move into our fiscal year 2022 second quarter trust fund report.
Hey, hello, everybody, this is our second quarter report, and we're going to start off with a brief reminder that the trust report only includes revenues and expenses that are associated with trust fund accounts. So it doesn't include the state appropriation, grants, investment income, or HERF funds or COVID expenses. What we're looking at here is our first report, which is the General Education Trust Fund. The student tuition and fee revenue lines include the summer and fall enrollment for the second quarter reports. They are falling where we would expect them to come in for that timeframe. The other trust fund revenues is up compared to budget, but that's primarily, primarily due to the timing of workforce revenues. There are some spring revenues that are included in that number. And the expenditures are also generally where we expect them to be. The, there's a couple of lines that I do want to just call out, the EE administrative expense. Administrative expenses line appears to be up slightly, but it's really due to timing. There were some larger invoices that were paid at the beginning of the year, and there won't be another installment on that, really, until next fiscal year. So, for example, our Illution Kali, which is the software system that we use, that's, you know, that's a one-time expense we pay at the beginning of the year. The NN line, which is our construction improvements line, reflects no expenditures, and just as a reminder, that's because we spend the carryover funds first before we get into using the current year's budget. And the last line item that I wanted to call out was the student tuition and fee waivers. Those are trending a little bit higher than budget, and that's primarily due to dual enrollment waivers. So you may recall that we transitioned from having, allowing students that are interested in the program, we're only allowed to take courses on campus pre-COVID. And then, once COVID hit, we opened it up, we offered the, that program back to allow them to take online and remote courses, so that we're seeing a little uptick in those waivers. If we could move to the next report, so this is our Health Trust Fund report. Contains primarily Allied Health and Nursing Program revenues and expenses, and really, everything is in line with expectations at this point in the year. And if we could move to the next. And this is our Capital Improvements Trust Fund. Again, the revenues are in line with expectations, includes the summer and the fall enrollment. The expenditures are also generally in line with expectations, and that being NN is not showing your expenses because we're spending the carryover funds first. And here you can also see that the waivers are trending up a little bit, for the reasons that I just mentioned. And if there are any questions on the trust fund reports, I'd be happy to answer them, and if not, we can continue with the vendor expenditures report.
Yeah, John, no question for me, it's, these seem to all look, you know, in line with expectations. You answered my question around, you know, spending the funds, you know, the carryover funds first, which is, which is why the zero show up there for each one of the, the funds, so, other than that, no questions for me.
Perfect, okay, so this is the vendor expenditure report, we show you the expenditures that, that are at 20,000 or exceed the $20,000 threshold. We also identify whether we intend to capitalize any part of those expenses, and if any part of those expenses was funded via DCAM. So this list is, you know, being the second quarter, a little bit larger than the first quarter report. Again, nothing is really jumping out on here with any expenses that we didn't expect to see.
Great, no questions for me. If there are no other questions, we can move right into our financial update for fiscal year 2022.
Okay, so I'll continue on with cash flow then. And here you will see that we have approximately $5.6 million available at TD Bank. We will be calling in the large financial aid dispersment at the end of this month. So you'll see that will give us a little uptick in cash, which we will ride down until the middle of May, when we call in our HERF loss revenue funds. Again, we will continue to spend that down through the end of the fiscal year, where we continue to project to have approximately a $3.2 million cash balance at the end of the fiscal year. And really, there's, there's nothing out of line or out of expectations at this point.
Excellent, thank you.
You're welcome.
So who's following up with the, in the next section, is this a is this Jason?
Yes, thank you, can we advance to the next slide, please? All right, so this is our standard detailed revenue and spending report through the end of January. On the next slide, I will hit the high points of the variances, then we can revisit the detailed slide if there's any additional questions. So as of the end of January, we're projecting approximately $500,000 in surplus. That's made out of a favorable variance in revenues of about 308,000 and a $185,000 favorable variance for expenses. Going back to revenues, we have additional formula funding that we didn't originally know that we were going to get rolled into our FY22 base from the 21 formula funding amount. We are also projecting AFSMI wage increases to increase our state appropriation as well. On the other side, we have tuition and fees, which were $8,000 favorable for the fall semester, however, for spring, we're projecting down 11%, whereas we had budgeted 5%. When we look at our expenses, we can see full-time salaries, where we have NUP increases that were higher than budgeted, and that was due to BHE require increases that they had allowed us to apply to the NUP salaries. We've also had an offset of $950,000 for unfilled positions. In part-time salaries, we've had savings for adjuncts due to lower enrollment, as well as additional part-time savings from part-time employees working less hours or unfilled positions. In operating, we've had, we're projecting an unfavorable variance due to additional expenses from Tech Park that we have to pay them 49,000 to hold the space for our ship's relocation. We have cyber insurance that was higher than originally anticipated, as well as additional workforce expenses and temps to offset our unfilled positions. In addition, as we've spoken in the past, we have electrical rates that is, were higher than originally budgeted as well. Do we have any questions on the financial projection?
No question, this is very well done, I like this exhibit, I like the detail provided in the, the call out, the callouts on the, on the right, it's very well done.
Great, thank you very much.
Can I just ask a question when it comes to the projected budget? Where do you see us for both semesters as far as total negative enrollment, and we're down 11% this?
As, as far as credits go, I would say we're probably going to land around 74,000.
This second half?
Yeah, we're, we're probably going to land around 74,000 credits in total. We budgeted 76, 665. So we're, we're pretty close to 11% down for the spring semester. So I would expect to land very close to where we are budgeting right now. That being said, we still don't know what fall, in fall two final enrollment is going to be. And we're still, you know, summer, we're not sure where that's going to be yet, so those are still variables.
And do you expect the Tech Park costs to maintain higher than what we budgeted for?
Not for this year, this is all we would have for that additional Tech Park for FY22.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And can we look back to the prior slide? And are, are, are we not good at seasonalizing our spend for our, our budget? I, I have the question, because right now, we're comparing to the full year, so we're saying that at this point, we should be at 58% of the full year, and we're comparing against that. But if, if we're good at seasonalizing our budget, we can compare against where we really would expect to be at, at this point in the, at any point in the year, and we can have that conversation about why there's a variance. So I'm just, I know, I know we've had this discussion in the past, I'm just curious why it's not showing up here, and if we're, we're just not good at seasonalizing our budget.
I can, I can jump in here, so the systems that we have right now really don't allow for that. We're working to try to figure out how to spread our budget over the 12 months of the year going forward, but at this point, our systems are not set up to do that. So I completely agree with you, it'd be, I would very, very much like to see the budget spread according to, you know, what we expect to happen at any given month or different parts of the year, but we're just not, we're, we're working on evolving to that point. So, very good point.
Yeah, great, great, I'm glad we're, we're lying there, and I mean, even if we took, I don't know, the last, a lot of these expenses are, are the same, you know, each year, so if we just took for what, where we could, we could just take and say, let's take the last three years and see how that looks, you know, you know, seasonalized and apply that, it can, it can help drive something, but I hear, hear you when you're saying you got system limitations, but that's, that certainly worked towards that, though.
Absolutely, thank you.
Great, thanks, any other questions on the update that Jason just went through?
None for me.
Great, nice job, Jason, appreciate that. And with that, let's roll into our fiscal year 23 budget process and perspective.
Yep, good evening, trustee Starks, good evening, trustees, good to see everyone. Happy February and Valentine's Day. Time is just ticking right along. Matt, great feedback. Our team is really shaping up that, the callouts and really pointing out the, the variance pieces. I think it's been a really nice visual for us all to work with, so I appreciate that work by Andrea and her team. We definitely keep hearing your feedback on that seasonality and the sort of quarterly piece, and and Andrea's been asking for, like, software since day one, I feel like. But again, we don't want to move too quick without looking before we jump on some of those things, but we're definitely a work in progress, so I appreciate that feedback. She and I are gonna, are gonna do this in tandem, everybody. She's gonna take the first part, really walk you through the timetable, walk you through some of these scenarios, Jeff, you had asked about credits, we, we've got a great visual right in this packet that shows the enrollment trend all the way through, and I will say to this committee, there's just been an amazing amount of work invested already by Andrea and her team to help shape then the three following months and the budgets that you will actually see. There's a lot of moving parts, there's a lot of detail, of course, but I think we've done really well to coming out of the gate, get our hands around some of these considerations, especially when a number of them are not exactly levers that we can control. So again, we're going to walk through all this, and by all means, jump in, or certainly at the end, we're looking for a conversation where we can really better get a gauge from you on priorities, and, and, and again, how we navigate this, but it gives us certainly a picture about four or five years into the future, and how we kind of tighten the belt and prepare ourselves for what's ahead. So Andrea, why don't you, why don't you dive right in with the timeline?
Sure, thank you, so the, our plan, this is, today's meeting really is a preparation for the future budget discussion, so the, we plan to bring the first draft of the FY23 budget at the March meeting, and then continue to refine it to get a final draft to you for committee approval at the May meeting. For today, what we wanted to do is you know, have a preliminary discussion where we present, you know, what would the status quo look like going forward if, if we don't change anything, and we let, we let things inflate? So today, today's really more, we want to have a discussion and see if we can get any guidance from you that will inform the, the first draft of the budget. So if we can move on to the next slide, please. Okay, so Jason has actually created this dynamic spreadsheet model that allows us to project out to FY27, modeling different assumptions that flow through the model. And so the model we're sharing today is essentially a model of a status quo carried out five years. So we're not, you know, we're, we're assuming that operations continue as they currently are today, with like, no cuts or additions, and really just incorporating some minor inflation. So today, what we're talking about today is not really a budget, so just to be clear, but it doesn't reflect any work that we'll be doing to improve what the budget looks like going forward, but this is really, just to give us all a sense of, if things continue as they are, you know, what are the financials look like? So the first couple of slides here, really just let us know what, you know, it's really describing what's in the model. So the assumptions in the model right now are that the state appropriation, the FY23 base appropriation is based on the, the DHE with one and a half percent annual increases thereafter. In terms of enrollment and credits, we're assuming that FY23 at this point will be down 3%, so, which is a much smaller decline than what we've seen in the last several years. But for now, we're, we're optimistically putting in a 3% decline, and then holding the, holding credits at 70,000, a floor of 70,000 credits for the, for FY24 through FY27. In terms of tuition and fees, we're not, we have not incorporated a fee increase for FY23, and then added a minimal fee increase annually thereafter of $4 per credit, which is smaller than, than what we've seen in the past. Staffing levels, the assumption at this point is full-time employees are held flat to the FY22 budget at 371. We have full and part-time salary expense of the rates inflating at 2% per year. Operational and other expenses also inflating at 2% per year, and at this point, the stick capital facilities and IT budgets are flat at 4.8 million. So that's what's in this model, if we go to the next slide, we'll see what's not in the model. So things that we could consider as we move forward in the budget process, but that we have not contemplated in this model. So it may be anticipating some of your questions, so the state appropriation, that's determined at the state level for a legislative process, so you know, the budget will be based on the best information we have available from the state. So we're not making any, you know, of our own predictions about that. Enrollment, we, we have not made any future growth assumptions in the model. Tuition and fees, that's, fee increases are approved by trustees. We have not made that assumption here, but just to let you know that every one, at 70,000 credits per year, every $1 per credit fee increase adds $70,000 in revenue. Full-time staffing levels and salary expense, as well as part-time staffing levels and salary expense, we've not looked at any potential reductions, you know, considerations of attrition over time, detailed analysis, that's something that could come later, but it's not been incorporated here. Operational and other expenses, as we said, we assumed 2% inflation, but you know, one consideration would, could be to absorb inflation and, and not inflate those expenses, but we have not considered that in this model, and we have also not considered any options to reprioritize capital plans to extend those budgets and timelines out. So just to be clear, what's, what's in and not in. So if we can go to the next slide, this is, this is the, the results of the model as was just described. So we can see here that if we look at the FY22 budget, which is where we are now, we, we budgeted a break-even budget, and we were able to break even because we included the HERF revenue, the, the HERF COVID relief funds. When we project that out to FY23, and the HERF funds are no longer available, without really changing any of our operations and including the assumptions we just talked about, we end up with a close to a $6 million deficit, and as we project out to FY27, that deficit increases to $7 million, so we go from $6 million to $7 million over those, those five years. So again, this doesn't assume any changes, but just to give you a sense of where we are. So if we can go to the next slide, please, by the way, I, I'll stop for a second, see if anyone has any questions about that.
Yeah, plenty of them, but I'll let you finish.
Let's go on for a little bit. So okay, I'll keep going, but really stop me anytime. Ah, something is not quite right, I don't know. It looks like these slides are not showing up quite as we would expect, let's try again, we're missing, that's okay, we'll, we'll kind of, hmm, interesting, is there, is anyone, is everyone else not seeing the colors there?
Yeah, we lost some of our color.
I'm seeing color.
I'm seeing colors.
Oh, I'm seeing colors on the, on the expenses, but not the revenue.
Oh yeah, that's going in the printout as well, what you guys sent us.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I actually have the other one up at the same time, because I have old eyes, so that the color show in that one, Mac, that was sent by Nene and Jeff.
Not, not, not the one I got. The one I got identical to what's on the screen, it's all white on the left side.
Okay, well, we have what we have at the moment. Well, I'll just try to be colorful, more colorful with my description. How's that? So.
Well, the, the actual, the actual dollar amounts are there, so, and we, we get the size, so we don't need to color, we're, we're good.
All right. So this is actually a slide, for those of you who were on the committee last year during the budget process, this reflects the, the FY22 budget showing sort of a buildup of the revenue and the expenses by category, and this is really illustrating how the, we use the HERF COVID relief funding to close a gap of $5.1 million in this year's budget. So if we move ahead to the next slide, we'll see if this will work. So what happens in this slide that you can't see as well, but the, the HERF funding goes away, and we can see how that leaves us with a $6 million gap. So this is more of a, it was supposed to have been a graphic illustration of what we saw on the the, the previous slides with the, with the numbers, but essentially, you know, what this is showing is that, you know, going into FY23, if we don't change anything, we don't have HERF funds, we will expect to have potentially a $6 million gap, unless we get some additional information. So if we can go on to the next slide. So just to orient you here, this slide is, is, this, this graph illustrates three different enrollment scenarios. So originally, we looked at just one enrollment scenario with credits at a, you know, held at a floor of 70,000 credits. This slide really gives us three different scenarios, so the orange bars here reflect the scenario we already talked about, where we keep that floor of 70,000 credits. Then we wanted to look at, well, what happens if we actually have a decline, if we continue to have an enrollment decline of 3% a year going out to FY27, and that gets us down to that eight and a half million dollar deficit in FY27. And then if we look at the green bars, that's actually saying, well, what if we actually have growth of 3% per year from FY24 to FY27? And I was actually really surprised to see that when we, when we like, put that through the model, we still ended up with a $5.3 million deficit in FY27. So then I thought, well, let's see how much growth we need to break even in FY27. And the way this model works is you kind of key in, you can key in the, the percent increases on the enrollment, and so I had to get up to 11% annual growth, which got us to 110,000 credits per year in order to break even in FY27. So if our expenses inflate, you know, really minimally, if we keep the same sort of expense structure and we have expense inflation, then we need 110,000 credits in FY27 to break even, and that would be 11% annual growth. And that brings us back to like FY17, FY18 enrollment levels. And so, so what is this telling us? You know, for me, this is saying that, you know, even with, if we end the trend of enrollment declines, it's clear that we have a structural deficit that will persist, you know, if we maintain the status quo. That's really what I'm seeing in this graph. And so it's also telling us that, that we really can't expect to grow our way out of the deficit as much as we would like to, if we say, oh, if we regain enrollment from, you know, from COVID, but that, that's really not going to, to work, so I just really wanted to lay this out as a baseline for you, and I'll stop there and see if anyone has questions before we go into discussing the assumptions for the FY23 budget.
Yes, I, I guess my, my first question is, how, are, this, this calls out to me an expense issue. So if we go back to 2019, 2018, 2019, what was our expense level at that point in time versus where it is today? Because clearly, we weren't losing in $5 million a year back then, so, so the question becomes, what are we doing fundamentally different now that we weren't doing back then? Now we realize that HERF funds helped us in 2021, I get it, right, that, that, that's fine, in '22, we're good, but our overall expense structure has gone up considerably, so I like, I like to see what are, what, what were we spending on in 2018 and 2019? And compare that to what the spending level, we're, we're spending, projecting the spend, this, this focuses on '23 at least, right, because essentially, it stays pretty, pretty, pretty flat, so, so where are we spending in '18, '19, '20, '21, and '22? Right, and then we can look at the components and see where this increased spending is, because what we, what we talked about earlier was declines in full-time faculty, because we saw, we saw the enrollment declines, which made, which made sense, so we're, we're seeing things, that the relationship of spend relative to what's happening on campus seems to make sense. But we, as we know, we, we discontinued programs and all that stuff, so we're not spending in there, but it looked like our overall expense structure is way out of whack, so I'd love to be able to just see kind of, again, what we spent on in 2018, '19, '20, '21, and then what the spending level is in '22 and '23 to get to these numbers we're looking at here.
I agree. Mac, let me help a little bit, Jeff, I know you got a follow-up question there. We'll, we'll absolutely put pen to paper, Mac, and make sure that we frame that out for everybody. What I would offer is, expenses have not changed, Mac, all that much. We have a revenue issue, right, with the enrollment decline and the We have a revenue issue, right? With the enrollment decline and the revenue loss from that. That's where the imbalance is coming from. Remember, we have two collective bargaining agreements, and those raises are done collectively on behalf of our unions statewide. So to a degree, some of the sort of steadiness of the expenses are derived from raises that we don't ourselves directly negotiate. But we also didn't have a huge sort of set of savings on some of the program continuation discontinuation conversations that we've had. Because ultimately, we've essentially maintained about three hundred and seventy full time employees. And that expense, again, you would look at it be shockingly similar three years ago as to the cost today when the revenue is the big change in that scenario from the enrollment decline. So we still have work to do, no doubt about it, on the expense side of things. And as Andrea is framing a little bit later on, really working to right size and better connect where revenue comes from and the expenses associated with that is certainly a work in progress. And I realize the numbers are sobering, everybody, I I do.
John, picking up on on what Mac was saying, I agree. I had the same thought. I like to see the last five years as comparison to the next five years to see where we were from from enrollment, from total credits, the expenses were also. You know, not not just that, but looking at the expenses that you're projecting, two percent inflation, we get seven point two percent inflation in twenty one. I understand how you're playing with inflation, but we already know we had increase in our electric rates from across the street by fifty thousand. I think you got to go three to five percent inflation rate in the next couple of years, unless we get that under control. And I don't know where the salary increases are as a percentage based on the contracts, but I'd like to see more information on that. And and you you got to look at where, you know, I don't care about five years from now. I care about the next two to three years. Five years will take care of itself and get the year two or three and really focusing on that in twenty three. But I think it is sobering to know that at least we're recognizing that without the state six thousand dollar bailout, we would be in dramatic trouble. And you know, you have to talk with our accounting firm at some point in time from a going concern standpoint. Do we have a going concern operation here? If we can't get this thing fixed, that's a serious consideration that we have to deal with, obviously, but.
That's absolutely right, Jeff. Echo that one hundred percent. And you know, and you think about it like, like, we we've been meeting as a ways and means committee, obviously, you know, every month for the last few years, right? And but me leading it and never did we talk about, I know this, this is sobering looking at it, but but this isn't new news, right? I mean, this this, I mean, you pull out that seven million dollars. It's it's the same thing, right? So it's almost like this is not an unveiling, right? So it's like, what have we been doing to manage the situation? Sounds like, you know, I know we got some conversations going, but at at the end of the day, this is, this was, we were staring at this issue, you know, for years, right? So so I know you guys want to ask us questions about guidance going forward. I mean, typically, when you build something like this, you 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 come with what Jeff is getting at, which is what's reality? Like, literally, when you think about about all these components, you use assumptions that you really think are going to play out. Then you try to tweak from there. So when you got two percent, yeah, that's nice. That's a scenario. But that's not the scenario that we know is going to live, to live and breathe, right? So to your point about, you know, we're not going to get eleven percent growth. At what what point do we expect the enrollment to to naturally start to tick up, if at all, right? Or or does the current environment with COVID, has it changed things completely? Whereby we need to be looking at just how we operate very differently, right? Those are the things that we need to be considering. Because this expense, at the end of the day, what we what we what we control is expenses versus revenue, right? So so that's why we can look at revenue and see, we want to see where we're spending. And if, John, to your point, if we're not spending more, at least we can understand what that is. And there's got to be things we can't tweak around the edges. But again, this is not, this is not, should not be new to any of us in terms of that have been appeared here, here for a while, particularly the administration at the college. Just in terms of, okay, if we pull out that seven million dollars of her funds, we got a problem.
Yeah. And I I think we have to pull in, I mean, it's nice to have a three million dollar surplus at the end of our fiscal year, which is great. May we're managing what is given to us, which is helping to offset what losses we might project into next year. You know, you're taking the income statement against the cash flow of the of the college to make sure we have the liquidity to to support anticipated losses. And hopefully not to the degree we're looking at now, but I mean, I like to know what the impact on that is in the strategy with the liquidity that we have at the end of the year going into next year. That's another time, but the factors in.
Right.
I can, I can pick it up and we can, you know, segue through to the next, because again, there's another set of slides here, I think that are prompting. Mac, it's great to hear that we are of one mind. This is not new news. And as much as we have worked across the college, to be sure, by the way, our internal stakeholders are as clear eyed as US trustees are. Right. On the expense side, we have work to do, difficult decisions to really utilize the runway that we have with some money in the bank and your support to work ourselves back to sustainable footing. Jeff, we're going to work hard to make sure that we don't land in a situation where from a financial audit standpoint, we have a going concern. We have already shown a willingness to make tough decisions to make sure that that does not happen. So again, that's on me to continue to make sure that we do do that. Yep. Let's dig into this a little bit. Again, just to be sure that this committee in particular sees the landscape. Obviously, state appropriation. We continue to refer to this, you know, I looked to some of our newer trustees in Somalia. If there's questions on this, don't hesitate. But this again is the sort of block grant, if you will, from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. That is our underpinning. And the biggest thing we want to be sure that people understand is just how much we actually get already. At least people wonder that we are advocating on behalf of the college. As TCC gets the large, second largest state appropriation, we are not the second largest community college. So of the fifteen community colleges, we get the second largest, and that has grown as a percentage of our budget because of the enrollment declines and the fee revenue associated with it. We are going from where it was under fifty percent, right? Forty seven percent back in fiscal year seventeen to now it's going to be almost sixty percent of our budget, sixty percent. Community colleges haven't seen that version of a percentage of their budget in decades. So arguably, the Commonwealth is doing its part, or we'll say from a policy policymaker standpoint, we're doing our part. We also know, again, it's a process that we are subject to where we don't know, you know, August first, we'll get our budget, we'll know what the dollar amount is, you know, the legislature and the executive branch do their dance. And we're never quite sure when we'll have that figure. So again, that's a little bit of perspective on the state appropriation. I'll take that next slide. Here's that enrollment decline, Jeff. So from again, no new news on this and really trying to norm for everyone. This trend is also pretty typical for Northeastern and New England Community College from a height in twenty thirteen of a hundred and forty two thousand credits. To this year, we're projecting to be at about seventy four thousand credits. And we're trying to put a floor on this. Trying to put a floor on that when you're an open admission, you essentially take all comers. There is no, you know, waiting list that you can just dip into. You know, trying to work to build out of this model. And even if we saw eleven percent growth for the next four years, as our CFO has pointed out, it still doesn't pave into the hole that has really gone on for, that has been built over a decade. So again, just real clear eyed around the credit piece. And again, this is where the revenue lost really hurts us. On the next slide, related to the revenue then is of course fee increases. You'll see again, the blue line where we flat lined. Right? Flat, we did not raise fees fiscal year twenty one, twenty two, right? And contemplating it for a third year, it certainly has an impact. I mean, at for every dollar increase at seventy thousand credits, at seventy thousand, it does add up eventually. And we need all revenue structures to be considered. And we certainly are very mindful of the PEL threshold. And ensuring affordability to us, this is one of those versions where when you as the board help us say STCC administrators prioritizing on behalf of the board affordability remains a priority, that's our signal to contemplate a fee freeze or certainly a very modest fee increase. Those are the kind of conversations we want to attempt to have. Let me see the next slide. Is this Andrea, is you the next one?
So, yes. So here, this this sort of brings back the expense discussion. So I think we all agree that continued deficits are not sustainable and a solution really requires alignment of expenses with revenue. So this chart shows a breakdown of our expenses by category. The three pie slices that are shown in blue, the different shades of blue represent salary and benefit expense. And that together is sixty six percent of the total expense budget. With full time salaries at fifty percent of the total, part time and adjunct at twelve percent and other salary related expenses at four percent. So you know, altogether, sixty six percent of the budget is is related to to salaries in some way. If we look at, again, some other big pieces here, operational utilities, out of that ten point seven million utilities is about one point seven million, so another nine million operational. A lot of those operating, operational expenses are fairly fixed expenses. They don't really, they don't really valid vary with enrollment. So something to consider. And then, of course, fills the facilities and IT in total, the four point eight million or nine percent is is fixed. But we can talk about changing that. So, you know, while while all expenses will be closely considered, closing the deficit really requires a focus on resources that fluctuate with enrollment. And at this point, our team is working, working on a model to identify for you and for us, you know, exactly which expenses are variable fixed and semi fixed. So what what expenses really would fluctuate with enrollment and what makes sense to look at in terms of strategies going forward? So any questions about that?
Yeah, yeah, Andrea, thanks. I thought that you're done. So so I mean, we really got to get serious about what is the expense structure that we need in twenty twenty two and twenty twenty three to support the revenue we expect to come in. Also extending that, do we ever expect credits to be dip below seventy thousand as possible, right? I mean, it so what what does the landscape look like, right? I mean, I mean, if you if you if you kind of pay it forward five years from now, there's a realistic that STCC will have students enough coming enrolling where where we can get even closer. It's fifty thousand, the best we can do, right? It's possible, right? Just giving the landscape out there. I mean, it's nice to say, wow, just look at back in twenty thirteen, we got all these credits. But the whole whole world has changed, right? I mean, we need to look at, you know, the way we do business completely differently and then say, okay, the way we need to do business is X. That means we can and 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 those that even would even expect, we expect to come to STCC is Y. You do the math, we expect revenue to be to be that. We're already at number two for 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 Dr. Cook's comments around number two and getting appropriate provision from the state. Okay. That's going to result into a revenue number that's going to be X. Then we got to say, what is the literal expense structure that we need to support that? It's clearly, just using a number, you're using your assumptions today, it's clearly a lot less than this. So it was nice to look at this pie to see where expenses are going. But this doesn't tell us what we can do about it, right? So our question isn't where the money is being spent. We know it's being spent in different spots, but it's more around, okay, what 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 can we do realistically? Again, not to just support, you know, just some assumptions, support assumptions that we think is realistic. And 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 that's where you get to, well, what's what's worst case? Worst case could be, I don't know, it could be fifty thousand credits, you know, back, but now even close to twenty twenty four, just because of the way ebbs and flows are going, who knows, right? But I mean, getting realistic about that will help us make make decisions around what can, what can we do with other funds? Because it doesn't make sense to throw, you know, good money after bad, right? So we don't, we we as a, as a trustee committee don't need to be approving. Well, that's 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 kind of make make our demise lower, right? We need to really look at, look at our operating model. What is it really caught? What are we going to get from revenue from that? What do we think enrollment is going to be? What do we think expenses, how we need to structure ourselves to support that? And then, oh, by the way, was that literally going to cost us? Because we got other issues that we haven't talked about with, you know, with with buildings and all that stuff that's also happening in the background. So there's a, this is a big, this whole thing is bigger than just us giving you guys some assumptions on what to look at, right? You 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 guys need to really walk through this together and say, listen, listen. Realistically, this is really what's what we what we believe are options using your model, our options that could play out. And then we as trustees can then take that and say, okay, well, based upon this, what do we think we can or can't do relative to funds that are available to us in our investment portfolios? Or maybe the revenues that we could potentially get are that are outside of the norm that we're typically used to seeing potentially. Or we can't get any more revenues and we need to make calls to 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 trustee establishment point. We need to make other calls that we we don't want to.
And and of course, our work, Mac, and we can take the next slide is to work hard to be sure trustees know how that work has already begun in earnest. And how we are sort of working to sort of brace against any surprises that people have around how we plan this, because we certainly, as opposed to two years ago, and the incredible uncertainty coming out of a stay at home order. We can smooth this out a little bit, but we want to be sure from your vantage point that you see how we arrive at sustainability, because obviously twenty seven million for full time employees is not sustainable. But how we smooth that out over the next three or four years, we absolutely need trustees to see that right along with us. It starts with painfully revisitation of this conversation right here. In internal, external, we are having conversations about programs. We walk through our good faith effort to relaunch those reinstated programs, the money that we spent on marketing that yielded very modest returns. And so with internal, external, what we discussed this month was administratively suspending enrollment, suspending admission into two of those programs, commencing with the teach out. And then potentially in April, seeking from that trustee committee, and then you all at the full board level, discontinuation of those two programs. And fundamentally, to this point around finding savings, we had classes of three or four or five students on average. And that's just not sustainable. And so we we are certainly doing that. You'll see the two programs mentioned biotech and biomedical engineering technology. We put the slide decks from internal, external at the back of your packet there. And we were certainly utilizing internal Excel from the programmatic aspects. And again, we've been real clear, even two years ago, the but program discontinuations was not a magic wand. It was not magically going to balance our budget. Nor do these very, very modest administrative actions save us a ton of money. But we again have to put into motion processes that will help us have these conversations. Again, how do we smooth this out over the next three and four years? Let me just check and see if there's questions about about this aspect of it.
Yeah, Dr. Cook. As I was, this is one of the things that Mac really kind of laid out there in terms of, because I was, as I was listening to Andrea laying out the this prospects in terms of status quo. We I want to know as we look forward to, because so far, you know, everything is a lot of this expenses right there. As we look forward to new programs, possibly potential revenue that we may may that could possibly change the status quo, so to speak. I know that currently, right now, one of the the latest and biggest programs that's been introduced and not only stick, but others, the STEM programs, for example. Are there other industries coming down the road that you foresee of new jobs, new training possibilities for new programs that you're hiring that we're not being discussed here, but something that you may be aware of, that you can share to say, these are some possible new things that in terms, that can become new programs that we can offer in the future that can because so far, you know, we're talking about this the STEM programs and what we have right now are still status quo. How can we change that? Looking forward for new things that we can offer that can maybe put a nudge in the enrollment process? Does that make sense?
It makes perfect sense, and I appreciate the prompting within the question. And it's helpful that we are, by the way, going to use this year to engage in strategic planning so we can wrangle with that college wide, right? I I would offer this, I I I tend to be a optimistic person, glass half full bullish. And again, I am that way. Certainly, even as we have to address some of the expense side things. Trustee Lindsay, what I would offer is that as much as this is about if we've built it, will they come? And that's a, that's a thing in COVID. Because we have a pretty wide array of STEM programming and certainly allied health programming that is pretty unique. But it does not necessarily mean, even if we have just the right marketing dollars, that people will come, because we've tried this now. We've, we have five examples with some significant marketing dollars in our world. Twenty five thousand dollars is a lot of marketing money that has not necessarily yielded. that has not necessarily yielded significant enrollment growth. What I offer to us is we have as much a consideration to talk about retention and to change the way we work to engage our students and retain the ones we have as we have a recruitment challenge. The opportunity for growth is potentially really in the savings that we have from keeping more of the students who do land with us. That's a conversation for another day. Uh, that's a conversation that we certainly are going to engage with in internal external. We have certainly significantly changed some things to help aid with this. But I offer to you, if there was a significant program, STEM or otherwise, that would show the kind of growth we need, we would already be right on top of that. We would. Um, but if you ask me, what are the high-demand, high-area? If you could sort of add it, it would be in allied health, quite frankly. There are incredible, right? We hear this wi widely, especially in this neck of the woods. There are many manufacturing jobs available, paying very good wages. And you don't even necessarily need to have an associate's degree from S D C C to get that job, and those go begging. So there's certainly work to do in some of those different areas, but Bay State would like us to clone every single nursing student that we have right now. So there's, there's a lot of work for us to do to try to be the bridge, be the fulcrum. This is why, by the way, investments in things like early college commerce, twenty credits on the table if you're a high school student at commerce as part of the pathway we're trying to do to really take the marketing out of it. We want to put our credits right in those students' hands. So they just walk right across the street when they're done and carry on with their health science degree. Those are the kinds of steps that we have in place, and we'll see if they will bear fruit in the coming years. Let me just see what the what the last, do we have one more slide? Andrea, just going to finish off real brief with some of our capital investments as a consideration. Again, it's only about ten percent of our expense side of things, but I'm not a lot of new news here either.
Sure. This is really just a reminder of where we are with facilities and I T. So, facilities has a longstanding annual facilities capital budget of three point one million. Uh, you know, it covers the campus master plan priorities, ongoing maintenance and emergencies. And and that is actually supplemented by D C A M funding, the five-year funding from D C A M, which for the five years ending in F Y twenty-three has been twelve point one million. On the I T side, we formalized an F Y twenty-two, an I T capital budget of one point seven million, uh some previous lack of um I T prioritization in budgeting, but to significant backlogs and the technology upgrades. So we really are doing some catch-up, especially, and we have special needs at this point required for cybersecurity as as those requirements are increased. So we have this four point eight million dollars combined stick budget. It represents an opportunity for savings as we think about the budget, but then there's a substantial risk of falling behind in needed repairs and upgrades. So just wanted to put that out there, something to think about uh as we move forward into the budget process. If you can go on to the next slide.
So I think this is me, and again, this is the big summary that is no surprise, is we need your help. We're going to ultimately need your approval uh from reserves as part of the revenue structure for next year's budget to get us a balanced budget. Um, again, this helps us. And again, the reason why we built a multi-year approach is so that you understand truly how this investment here helps us smooth the pathway to twenty twenty-seven and a far more sustainable outlook. Mac, I can offer you, we're not going to ask trustees for six million dollars. We know pen to paper, we're going to sharpen it up. But we also know what the appetite is. If we somehow said we're going to reduce our full-time employees by thirty positions and how that will be received and given the pushback you all have heard in the recent past. So again, we do need your help. It likely will be a big number. We're also going to model for you how we walk that out over the next three years. And again, take it bite by bite to get ourselves to a place where, yes, we can stand on our own feet. Um, again, this was really important for us to be sure that we got there early for you. So when you see the first draft of the budget next month, you already know we're working at this. Happy to take feedback, though, questions. I think the the last slide in the deck really is about your feedback priorities.
Yeah, I I appreciate you and Andrew both walking us through this to make sure that we're all eyes wide open. So definitely appreciate the the walkthrough. I guess, you know, I know you you're saying you need you need us support from us, you know, I I I'll say the the work we're is coming upon you and team, because you have to show us clearly what myself, trustee Sadler, and trustee Lindsay were just going through, right? We need to see the details so we can, we can make a determination on whether or not we shouldn't be using the funds, because it will not be a layup. Even six million dollars, yes, the answer is no. Even one million dollars, the answer is no, until we 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 understand clearly why we need that. But and I'm almost feeling like we need support outside of the four walls of S D C C, right? We need an industry consultant to come in and help us understand. We have a, we potentially have a going concern issue here. This isn't just about next year's budget and, oh, you know, we got seven hundred fifty thousand deficit, can we move money? We're not there. We we have beyond, if we if we move, I don't know, I'll pick a number, if we move three million dollars over, we still have the same problem going into twenty twenty-four, right? So we we really need some help help to look at the landscape broader than what's going on in the four walls and what I, but I believe and certainly love to hear the other trustees. But what I believe, the you and team have the ability to really see, no, no fault of you, it's just that you're focused on the institution. But more globally, what's happening with with other institutions, what's happening in our our community? And what should we be looking at for enrollment numbers for the next couple of years? And then, again, going back to what I was saying earlier, and then what does that, does that cause us to change our operating model co completely? Or 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 just some? And then what's the expense level that we need to support either either case? And then what's the, what are the, what are the actual dollars that we would actually need to fund it, right? Because we need, we 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 need to get to that point right now, though what, so the eye-opening thing here is not eye-opening that it exists. What's eye-opening is we really need to do something now about five years from now, because we don't. We're going to draw, we're going to draw down the money, draw down the money and draw down the money, and we're going to be left with no institution, right? So we really need a real, a real look at the industry in and of itself and then how that applies to the numbers and the assumptions that go in the model. So the model is great, but the model is only great if you're if you're applying assumptions that are really real. So if we said balance the budget without any any additional funds, material additional funds coming from reserve, what does that look like? So in order to do something like that, you'd have to really go through and say, okay, what's happening in industry? You know, even in the community, how many folks do we have graduating from our from our high schools in the area? You know, who's going to come to S D C C? What's happening with other colleges? What are they projecting? So it's so I know a lot of this stuff can't be done in, you know, in in certainly in the next month, certainly not next two months. But I I'm feeling like we need an external view and opinion on what's happening here that you guys can actually take and then apply it to your institutional knowledge about how the community works and how S T C operates. I love to hear other trustees kind of point it point.
Yeah, trustee starts, um, I agree with what you're saying. I I do think, though, however, rather than um, it will be interesting to see if there are, what do they call it, bright spots? There's a book that I I read about shining spots or bright spots, you know, models um that are working for community colleges. There are, there's got to be um someone other, another community college that's doing well or that is either be able to successful in retaining their students through COVID or has been able to even grow. Um, and it would be great to see if we can find out what those best practices are or those um innovative uh programs that they're putting together um or the way that they've handled um restructuring or changing their expense structure uh to be able to deal with um, you know, uh the enrollment issues. But at the very least, um if there was a way to find out of of, you know, like you said, someone that knows about those bright spots or those great um any any colleges that are doing well, um that we can possibly learn, learn some lessons from there and and see if we can figure out a a solution to this ongoing problem, ongoing concern. So um.
Your trusty, it's a great point. I'm sorry, I'd like you to.
No, 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 continue. I was done.
It's a, it it's a great point. I mean, as you know, we got the technical aspect of what we do that other institutions don't have, like like we do, but you're absolutely spot on, right? It's it's like, we got to dig out of the hole with some, some, some someone outside of, you know, us on the call, right? It'd be nice to be able to add that to our our approach to tackling the issue that we saw back on the prior slides.
Yeah, and I think we, I think we can tackle what we already saw, because we have data, right? We have data the last twenty-four months, the last two years of what happened to us. I think we all know empirically that the entire higher education um environment has shifted, right? From from a face, only face-to-face to um either remote or a hybrid, right? And so, and and I think a lot, even from a business perspective, a lot of people are concentrating on what they do well. So I think that's the important two. We have a very important word in our title is technical. How do we, right, really kind of put forth the technical and really concentrate on what we do really, really well? And I think that is the ask John and Andrea is, right? You come to us with, using the model. I like the model because it kind of really shows it. I don't have your expertise, Mac and Jeff. It really kind of explains to me quickly what's going on. But now let's input what, you know, next year, uh the next couple of years are going to look like. Um, so we can get to really making to Max's point, there's hard conversations, because we've got a um facility issues, right? Um, coming down the pike very, very quickly. Um, and so that, I mean, this doesn't even, you know, go down that road. So to Max's point, we got a lot to come. Um, it's not going to happen in a month or maybe not even two months, but we've got to have something by May uh for us to to move forward and and present to the entire board.
I got a few comment. Thank you. Um, I got a few comments with that, biggy backing on everyone's discussions. When I look at where you are in your budget process, looks clear where we're sitting. I always look at, you're going to look at your expenses and and reduce those reasonably as much as you can. And you're looking at the top line, probably wanting to get to a hundred thousand credit hours instead of seventy. It's a thirty percent reduction in what, four years? I guess my question is, when you're looking at the second round of the budget process next month, where you really, where where would we be in your budget reasonably? If we were to go back to a one hundred thousand credits, if we can get there, where does that stand? What we have is, you can only reduce expenses so much, and if we can't get the revenue we get, we've got to change the revenue stream. Now, what does that mean? You call Al Casper up at at Savage Industries and you get him as a leader in that industry? And you have a work-study program, you change the the where the company pays half, we get revenue from business? Who's our top ten businesses we're putting our students into? We need to partner with all of these organizations that are local if they want to get our students, uh because they're not getting them anywhere else, apparently, and we're providing a good job to them. So um if we can't get the revenues from our existing paths and we can't reduce our expenses, well, we've got to go to another method of gaining revenue. And I'm not saying it's today's answer, but you know, you're looking, you're staring at a five million dollar deficit on fifty-five million in revenue. That's that's first pass, and I respect that. Last comment is, when you're looking at, and I stared at me, Andrea, you know where I'm going on that. You've got a capex budget of X. We may not have a capex budget in twenty-three, whether we want it or not. We might have to rely on the capex budget that we previously funded and see where we are with the existing projects to see if we can squeak that down a little bit or not. Not saying I want to take it away, but I'm sure you're looking at every option to try to save cash somewhere. So, I mean, you've got, you've got expense control and revenues, and where where can we save money? What is the, I, where's the absolute bare minimum that we can live within twenty-three? And then project out to twenty-four. You got to get through twenty-three, twenty-four. Heck, I don't care about twenty-seven. Obviously, we're going to make decisions for twenty-three and twenty-four that will affect twenty-seven, because we know where we're heading. Um, you know, this is facts are on the table. Put up your information. Let's go through a second budget uh conversation next month and think, think out of, think, think out of the box, and I like Max's idea. If there's a third party, whether it's the state, whether it's D C A M, whether it's somewhere that we can, you know, use, maybe perhaps that all the other community colleges, are they experiencing the same level of deficit revenue versus overhead versus us? Dr. Cook, any thoughts, outside support to have us see what our budget might might allow for changes?
So let me, let me, let me offer this. Um, we're definitely taking notes. We're definitely, when we come back, we'll make sure that we work to address some of these questions. It makes me realize particularly for the full board, uh Jeff and Mac and Somalia, we'll try to bring in some guest speakers to be sure that you have perspective beyond our voices on the strategic outlook. I can certainly continue a practice I've done at times where I send you some of the, you know, uh quicker digestible articles on community college outlook. We are not missing anything when it comes to the strategic outlook, both on the expense and revenue side. Uh, we can certainly, even I could talk with Mary Kate offline about having some other board chairs from other community colleges potentially come and be a speaker at our board chair. So you can hear directly from a fellow trustee that way at other community colleges. We do have some fundamental issues that we all need uh to sort of help move forward. A peer community college that has about our credits has thirty-five less, thirty-five less full-time faculty than we do. There are some really difficult conversations to have on the expense side piece. Uh, you've heard me talk again about this idea of we don't have a bloat of administrators uh at a college like S D C C. We have some programs that are very expensive, and even Jeff, I encourage the thinking around employer support. So both from manufacturer or even healthcare, the challenge is, remember, we don't have enough tuition fees to cover what these programs cost. So even if Bay State said, we'll pay for twenty students to attend your nursing program at that price point, it doesn't cover the costs for the employees, the full-time faculty we need in that nursing program, right? So this is fundamental, but I offer with the team we have here, we absolutely see the landscape. And Mac, what I I would be the first one to say that we need a consultant if we needed one. I would be absolutely be the one to come to trustees and say, we need you to help us out of reserves, fifty thousand dollars, hundred thousand dollars for a consultant to give us a perspective. We are not missing anything. I offered that to you, that if we needed a consultant, we would be asking for that kind of perspective. But again, if we haven't demonstrated to you how well this team, top to bottom, cabinet, academic affairs, student affairs, I T, administration, finance, we will continue to redouble our efforts to demonstrate to you how well we understand the landscape that we have in front of us. We will.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I guess for me, you know, to say that we're going to keep the floor at seventy thousand credits is telling me that you're not looking at the landscape. So that I I'd rather see, based upon what we see out there, for literally, we have high school graduates of X. We know, we expect other other institutions around us expect to get X and X percentage of those students. We expect X per students come here for business, for technical, for 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 needs. We we look at, and this is, we expect that to continue through the next couple of years. That to me is the outside-in look that that you guys are just focusing on, we're going to stop at seventy thousand. That to me isn't, isn't having the knowledge I'm looking at. I'm not, again, think think broader. If you look at those numbers, you're talking about unveiling, we're looking at an institution that's got serious problems, right? So so whether it be revenue, expense, you both, so we need to really unpeel the onion and say, wait a minute, let let's make sure we 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 stop and understand what's happening in the external environment, eh, which we can't control, that's going to happen to us. And and let's 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 make sure we control, have understanding what's happening internally, which we do have more control over. And it's the outside part of it, you just can't have, you don't do it. You literally don't do it. So and so bringing in other folks to come speak to us, to me, it'd be a waste of time for me personally, because, yeah, they can tell what's happening with their structure, but we operate very differently. So I don't want to hear from just somebody at another college. I want to hear from a professional that says, you know what? We've been advising other institutions as well, and we realized this is what's happening with the landscape. And we realized that, you know what, we might, we might have too much space and, you know, that we're we're funding literal physical space. Because with with the impacts of COVID and what 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 trustee Meara went through was the 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 educational landscape has completely changed. We need to address that when it comes to our overall budgets. And you, we, none of us here can do that, because we're focused on today and what we're doing here. It's having that outside in to be, like I said earlier, marry that with what we're doing. And now we can have credible inputs into the model that can then spit out, okay, if these things play out the way we got input. that can then spit out, okay, if these things play out the way we got input into externally, this is how it's really going to look. Then we as trustees can sit back and have a much better judgment on how we should or shouldn't use reserves. Other than that, I mean, because I don't think any of us see your questions. You guys aren't doing your due diligence that you can. But again, you can't know what you don't know. You know, and so again, I'm looking at things like, okay, well, who do we get most of our students from? And how we think that source is going to play out, so we can look at what enrollment is going to be? What's happening with the state? To get something from the state that says, okay, this is kind of where they see it, right? And how things are going. So we don't have to, so it's not us looking at your word. You're just using inputs that you got externally and applying those inputs into the model. And for me, that would be a good, more well-rounded view of how we should be forecasting, not just relying on things that you literally cannot know. You just can't know.
So I guess just a couple of things come to mind. One is, the 70,000 wasn't meant to seem to indicate our narrow thinking on this. This is why it's helpful to have your feedback. We can certainly look and will look at multiple scenarios, and these are levers we can move. 50,000 credits, 100,000 credits, it helps us to have this feedback so we can know how you want us to look at elements of this model. Mac, you also raised a great point of things we can't know. And there are things like, if only the state were somehow able to provide us what you shared. That doesn't exist, right? Like, there isn't anybody who, again, I sit in a meeting with my 14 counterparts every week, right? We have a pretty good handle on the landscape, the pulse, other people's views on this segment, community colleges. Again, let me go back to the drawing board and think about how we have these different conversations. There are certainly always blind spots, and it certainly is a matter of what are the things we actually can control? And certainly expense at a community college is the more manageable piece as opposed to the revenue aspect. Again, I'm not, it seems like we are resistant to this idea of an expert. When again, we have all the local expertise we need right here in our leadership team to help address your questions and to work with you to establish priorities.
Okay, just make sure you know what you signed up for, because you know, this trustee group is not shy, so. So good, okay, so great. The interest of time, you know, we definitely, I'll be respectful of that. Thank you both, you and Andrew for taking us to do that. I think it was a very helpful discussion. Look forward to next week's, next month's, rather, review of the next round of the budget. And I guess with that, there's no old business. Is there any new business? Okay, hearing none. Our next meeting is March 14th at 5 o'clock. And Nae, we take the role for to adjourn the meeting.
Excuse me, Mac, before you take the role, I do want to compliment and commend the presentation because you were frank and to the point and not sugarcoating it, and I respect that. I'm not here to complain. I'm here to help. And I think that what you have provided, I'm going to take a hard look at again before our next meeting. And I thank you for the amount of work, because I think it's a great start. I just needed to point that out. Thank you.
Agreed. Thank you, trustee Sadler. Any other comments before we adjourn the meeting? Okay, Nae, would you please take the role?
Mary Kate Muren?
Yes.
Max Starks?
Yes.
Samalid Hogan?
Yes.
Maurice Lindsay?
Yes.
Non Rondan? And Jeff Sa.
Yes.
Thank you.
Great, thanks, Nae. Thank you all. Have a great night.
Thank you.